This meeting, God, we just ask that you would lead us and guide us and we just give you all the praise and glory in Jesus.
Amen.
And at this time, we'll have any questions or comments from any citizens that would like to speak?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, I just wanted to come and express appreciation to the city and especially Garrett for the assistance that the city provided to the college, uh, cutting down the dead trees along College Avenue. I think the some of the firemen came out there and did that and we had them over for a free lunch. I think it was last week or the week before, but they said that was a training exercise for them, but whatever the reason, we appreciated it. And um, I think maybe there's some other projects that maybe that the city can help us with that we've been discussing with Garrett. But I also met with the architect and the construction manager today for our new residential hall. And they complimented the city on how well that the city was in getting permits and things going out there so that we can get that built. And so maybe students could get in there uh, next fall. So again, thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
It was the mitigation crews who are, you know, there are.
Awesome.
Yeah, they are certified sawyers. So a lot of times, you know, that kind of goes unnoticed, but uh, they do a lot of that other work, so we appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, if there's none, then we will move on to the consent agenda, items five through seven. Oh, and I'm sorry. I don't know what's with me today.
It's a Monday on a Tuesday.
I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to accept consent items five through seven as written.
A second.
All in favor? And it passed. They pass. And item eight, consider and take appropriate action to approve on first reading ordinance O dash zero one zero dash twenty-five, adopting a combined tax rate of point six oh six eight oh seven per hundred value, per hundred dollar valuation for fiscal year 2026. Mr. Scradlin.
I'm not going to talk just a whole lot on this particular item. We did a presentation last uh, last council meeting, and I do have that summarized in the next presentation when we talk about the budget. Uh, the point six oh six eight oh seven is the no new revenue rate. So that is the tax rate that generates the same amount of tax revenue this year or coming up as we did this year. So it is, it is, you know, and we get to say that it is not a tax increase. And so this is the sixth year now that we've adopted the no new revenue rate or a rate lower than the no new revenue rate. Doesn't matter. I have any questions, but we will touch on that again a little bit in the budget presentation.
Um, then we will do a record vote by show of hands and I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve on final reading, ordinance O dash zero one zero dash two five, adopting a combined tax rate of zero point six zero six eight oh seven cents per one hundred dollar valuation for fiscal year 2026.
Second.
All in favor? And passes. Item nine, receive a presentation, conduct a public hearing, and then consider and take appropriate action to approve on final reading ordinance O dash zero one one dash twenty-five, adopting the fiscal year 2026 operating budget. Mr. Scradlin.
So I know that the council's aware, but I will kind of reinforce, you know, the public watching, you know, the budget process actually starts each year in January. As we start taking uh, capital requests and start working through that. So what you're seeing today is about nine months worth of coordinated effort amongst all city staff, especially directors. And so of course I want to thank them for all their hard work throughout the year. I know that probably a couple of the budget emails and some of the budget requests. I'm sure there's some rolling eyes out there, but they seem to put up with it somehow. So uh, they haven't run me out of town yet. So I appreciate that. And then like I do with all of these presentations, I do want to remind everybody that that all of this is online. Borger TX dot gov slash transparency or just Borger TX dot gov. There's a big button, financial transparency, all of our budgets, tax rates, expenditure reports, audits. It's out there. It's been out there. We put the proposed budget out there in early phases as we work through it. Uh, right now, this presentation is now posted out there along with the budget. Uh, you can also just Borger TX dot gov slash budget will take you to the current budget. Uh, we will update that once fiscal twenty-six starts, but we're still a little bit away from that. So I, you know, I know I say this a whole lot. Everything we do is a partnership. Our part of this is putting it out there and listening to feedback, but you know, we can't hand deliver a copy of a three hundred and forty-six page budget to every single citizen. Uh, but it is all out there and we feel like we've uh, done a pretty good job trying to address some of the feedback concerns uh, as we move forward in the budget. So again, I did want to just do a little bit of summary on our tax rate. Uh, like I mentioned last week, I know that everybody always freaks out when they get their appraisal bill, you know, every year from the appraisal district. Oh my God, it's doubled. It's whatever. It's gone up and you know, our appraisal rates have gone up. Uh, but I do try to remind everybody, this is only one half of that equation. And so you'll see that steady trend uh, kind of increasing. And then of course in 2021, we had that big jump as inflation kind of really hit. But at that same time, when we look at our combined tax rate, you see it going in the opposite direction. So as long as we're doing what we're supposed to be doing and being good fiscal stewards of the taxpayers' money, we can kind of keep that in check. So you can see that in 2020, our tax rate was point eight six three four nine. We're almost twenty-eight cents below that now at point six oh six. So yes, your appraised value has gone up, but no, the city isn't taking much more. And so what that looks like today, our certified freeze adjusted value was five hundred and ten million within the city limits of Borger. Last year's was four hundred and eighty. Then we take off the twelve million that's frozen in the tiers for that. So our current tax rate is point six five six six four five. Our voter approval tax rate, that's the amount the council could go up to without requiring a vote of the public is point eight eight one eight three six. The certified no new revenue rate is point six oh six eight oh seven, which is what we proposed. The point six oh six eight oh seven breaks down to a maintenance and operations. So the part that's actually going to fund the maintenance of the city at point four six three four oh seven. And INS, which is the debt rate, that's what goes to pay off debt is point one four three four. So overall this year, that was a decrease in this budget of zero point zero four nine eight three. So about five cents lower than last. What this impact looks like now, I've done this. I've done this two ways because if you remember last time we talked about, you know, our numbers are a little skewed because we did a home sit exemption last year. So that's kind of changed the average. Uh, but the current tax rate is seven point six percent lower than last year's tax rate. The average value of our homes was actually up two point five percent. The average tax that we're going to collect is down five point three percent. So that's where like, you know, on the average home, you're actually going to pay just a little bit more because it grew more than the, you know, when you take that off. So that you're not saving quite as much as what the tax rate went down because the appraisal went up a little bit more. But our total tax levy, like what the city is actually bringing in on that is point one percent less. So last year we budgeted three point one oh one. This year we're budgeting three million ninety-eight thousand, so about three thousand dollars less. Uh, value of new property on the roll was just a little over thirty-five hundred. So now we expect to see little improvement on that next year as we've got homes under construction currently in Yucca Estates and some other projects and commercial projects we know are in development that we think will hit the tax roll. So when you look at our history of the, of this is the money that the city's actually brought in on taxes. So you can see that after a couple of years of it going up, when we were kind of at a flat tax rate, but appraisals were going up, we maxed out in 2020 with two point nine million dollars in revenue. This year, this is on the M and O side. This year, two point six. So tax rate is actually supporting about four hundred thousand dollars less than it was in 2020. So just kind of keep in mind, we'll talk more about that when we look at the different revenue sources of the city in the budget. And then I want to once again kind of touch about the foregone revenue. So this is the revenue that the city could have generated if we had adopted up to the no new, the voter approval rate. So that would have been four hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars in twenty-one, nine hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars in twenty-two, one point one million dollars in twenty-three, seven hundred and eighty-four thousand and twenty-four. And this year, eight hundred and ninety-two thousand four hundred and eighty-eight. So when it comes to tax and property tax, I do feel that we're being very mindful of the impact on our citizens and being responsible with that money because we're using less. So what more could be asked? I mean, I guess nothing, but they also want service. So it is always a balancing act. So now as we actually get into the budget, gonna start talking a little bit about revenue. So this year, the general fund revenue is uh, going to increase by our budget to revenue by three point five percent. That's twenty-one million, two hundred and sixty-seven thousand, seven hundred, uh, six hundred and seventy-six. So there's that one percent decrease in property tax revenue. A two percent increase in sales tax revenue. You know, we're trying to, we're got a couple of turnarounds about to start, a big one out at Nutrien. And then a couple of smaller ones out the plant. So we're hoping that that'll, that'll benefit, you know, all of our sales tax from the last big turnaround actually hit not fiscal twenty-five, but fiscal twenty-four, which is kind of somewhat why we were a little flat, little trending down this year. We are being a little optimistic, but but two, two percent is still pretty conservative in that amount. So overall, we're looking pretty good there. A one percent in group gross, increase in gross receipts tax. This is the uh, franchise tax that the utilities pay us to use our right of way. So we get a fee from Excel. We get a fee from the cable company. We get a fee from uh, AT&T and we get a fee from all these other people that use our right of way. Uh, that's mainly going up because that fee is a percentage of their gross sales. And so uh, we'll talk about rates a little bit later. And while we've been pretty good, I know that everybody knows all the utility rates are going up. So uh, when that goes up, we do make a little bit more percentage off of, off of that. A two point four percent increase in industrial district contracts. That's negotiated amount. Uh, so that goes up our pre-set negotiated amount each year. Thirteen percent increase in fines and forfeitures. That seems like a big amount, but uh, that's only about, we'll see that on another side. It's about thirty thousand dollars. I think it's not a whole lot of money. Uh, mainly that is because we've been under budgeting that. And so we've actually been increasing our collection. I think some of that was probably from the last time all those contractors were in town and the motor officers kept busy with them. So we are seeing a little bit out of that. Uh, keep in mind that fines and forfeitures is less than two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars of our total budget. So out of a twenty-one million dollar budget. So that's a big percentage, but we are not. It does not even cover a hundred percent of the cost of municipal court. So we're definitely not making money on fines and forfeits. A six point five percent increase in service charges. The biggest part of this is thirty percent increase in EMS charges. Uh, after taking over EMS, you know, we've slowly been growing up that. And you'll see when we get to the expense side and as we've talked in a couple of work sessions, as we've gone through the budget, that will fund eight new positions to staff a third ambulance. So we are taking the money that we make off EMS and reinvesting that back into the service for our community in the Southern Panhandle. So that's uh, pretty good. The people that are paying that are the people that, that need the service or the insurance provider. Uh, there is also a twenty percent increase in miscellaneous revenue. This is a golf, the golf cart lease payment that the golf course pays to us. We've always done that. The auditor, we did a change. He, we had been offsetting the expense of that line item. So we had a a line item that, you know, because they pay us for what we pay, but we lease them so we can get the government rates since we own the golf. We've always just offset that expense. The auditor wants to see it as revenue and as expense. So used to, we just offset the expense with it. So this year it's hitting a revenue line item and that's what that is. So that's about thirty-three thousand dollars a year. Questions on general fund revenue? Uh, we've got a few more slides on that. Uh, in just a second, on the water sewer fund, we're looking at a one point nine percent increase. That's a, takes the water sewer fund or other main fund to fourteen million, one dollar and uh, one thousand four hundred and nineteen dollars. Uh, most of that is the five percent increase in sewer sales following the small rate increase that was the projected in our uh, rate study. Uh, eighteen percent increase in tokai water sales. We way under budgeted them this year. They've started using more water with some of their scrubbing and their SO2 scrubbers that have gone in. They're telling us that's going to reduce back. So this eighteen percent is still not what they will pay us this year. It's still below what we made this year. So I think we've still got a pretty good safe uh, amount there. And then a fourteen percent uh, increase in salicyd assets is a big percentage, but it's just a small amount. I think it's a thousand dollars more just with our uh, vehicle replacements. So we looked at it in more detail. Here it is by the numbers. It kind of breaks down like you see fines and forfeitures total. Yes, it's up thirteen percent, but that's from two hundred and forty-three, uh, only two hundred and forty-three thousand dollars from two hundred and fifteen. Uh, the biggest jump is there in service charges again, and that's the EMS service charge. When we break this out by the percentage of general fund revenue, uh, property tax is thirteen percent of our revenue this year. So this is the one that everybody likes to likes to pound on, you know, that I pay taxes. Well, you know, we have twenty-one million dollars of expenses. Property tax is two point seven million of thirteen percent. So eighty-seven percent of our general fund operations is funded by another source other than property. You can see the next, the big one is uh, service charges, which funds thirty-five point nine six percent. So these are the revenue we make by the people that are actually receiving benefit of that service. This is solid waste. This is EMS. This is what the school pays us to staff BI uh, SROs in the school. This is what the county pays us to operate the dispatching system along with fridge and stenette. Uh, this is what the state makes us collecting revenue for birth and death records. Uh, when you come in, it's all those things that you get something from that you pay for. Sales tax is twenty point four nine percent. That's four million, three hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. So almost twice as much in property tax we make in sales tax. Uh, this time of the year, I do also like to remind everybody that, that part of that property tax, we have for property tax reduction. So the more that goes up, the more it pushes our rate down, which you've seen as our sales taxes gone up, the property tax rate has gone down because of that aspect. And so I think while I know that we can't get everything local, shopping as much as we can local or having it shipped locally is definitely more beneficial. Uh, gross receipts tax is four point nine two. Remember that's the franchise fee. That's Excel. That's uh, Texas gas. That's AT&T. And then license and permits are point five one. That's building permits, all those little things. It's, it's a very small. Questions on general fund revenue? Here's the breakdown in detail of water sewer. So it's a, pretty much all kind of spread out there. I don't have a little chart, the way the system works on this, but four, four percent is nutrient water cells, five point eight percent is sewer cells. Uh, is up a little bit. Sorry, that's not the, ignore, I'm looking at the, it's not just there today. It's definitely. Monday on a Tuesday. But you can see that, uh, you know, these are the services we get. So water sales is two point eight million dollars of that fourteen million dollars. Uh, B sixty-six remains our largest water customer. Uh, they're projected a little over four million dollars. This year we're projecting uh, four point one five next year. Uh, just based on their past history, nutrient water cells, we budgeted a two point four last year. We're projecting two point eight this year or we think they're going to end the current budget year over two point eight million. We're still, I'm, I'm only, we're only going up one hundred thousand dollars. Uh, you know, they do have that turnaround coming. So they will be down on some of that. So we'll see how, how that actually goes. But overall, water sewer is mainly flat. We've kind of, you know, reached that stability and we're not, as you'll see when we get to the rate table, we're not messing much with rates. So when we look at that government wide, and so this is all funds, total all fund revenue is forty-one million, six hundred and fifty-three thousand, six hundred and thirty-nine. That's up two point three seven from last year. Uh, that includes the special revenue funds, all those other court security, fire training, all the little miscellaneous funds. When we look at revenue by, by fund type, so two point four million dollars is, is coming into capital improvement funds. Most of that is anticipated grant revenue coming in or fund transfers from excess reserves. Debt service is getting eight hundred and twenty-eight. That's all property. That's that INS tax. So of that uh, rate that generates about eight hundred and twenty-eight thousand. Economic development and their, their revenue sources, a little over two million dollars. Enterprise fund we just talked about along with the general fund and then our special revenue funds is a little over one point one million dollars. So that's how that breaks. When we talk about fees, there are very minor fees this year. Uh, solid waste, as we've talked about before, our H R, our contract with Pampa goes up by fifty cents. So we increased the solid waste rate by fifty cents. So this year it's going up from twenty-eight dollars to twenty-eight fifty per month. Uh, the tipping fees, this is what you pay at the, to dump your trash off at the transfer station. If you're not a residential customer with your extra thousand, is going from fifty-three dollars to uh, fifty-five dollars. Uh, that's going up just a little bit more because uh, Tampa's planning on doing a rate increase. And so I felt it better to pass those along to the tipping fee customers than to add the uh, residential fee. I'm still not a hundred percent sure what that's going to be. And of course, the residential fee has got more of the fixed costs. So it's better to kind of keep that fixed. This one fluctuates with who brings, brings what in. So that's still uh, a pretty reasonable price, but it's just two dollars more.
After you have your free thousand.
Right, that's after. And like for, for some, unless you're a big commercial user, a thousand pounds, a, a, or a ton is two thousand pounds. Two thousand pounds of trash for an individual is a lot of trash. And that's why it's, it's funny when we talk about illegal dumping, you know, the amount of effort that people go in to not go pay fifty-five dollars per ton.
Yeah.
They will spend four hours.
And they get thousands free.
And if they're in, but even if they're, even if they're a county resident, like
Yeah, correct.
A, a bedload of household waste is probably three hundred pounds, which is like twelve dollars. But they will spend four hours and probably thirty-five dollars in fuel to haul it and illegally dump it than just to go pay the twelve dollars at the transfer station.
We're dumping it now. I didn't complain about, our alleys are dirty.
Yeah, exactly.
So uh,
I'll take care of that.
That, uh, but, but so that's still pretty cheap. I mean, I've never, I mean, if you weigh it yourself, I mean, we, it, two thousand pounds fifty is, is a lot. Now like, yeah, if it's construction material or roofing material or something like that, that adds up. But it's still pretty, pretty cheap. But keep in mind that that, that type of waste that comes in at the tipping fee is normally the heavier stuff. It's normally the stuff that's harder for us to uh, manhandle. It tears up our equipment more. Uh, when we put it in the transfer trailers, it limits how much trash we can take to Pampa in that trailer because it weighs it down. So that's also why we're skewing a little heavier to the tipping fees. And then the sewer minimum's going from what, twenty-one dollars a month to twenty-two, twenty-five. So just a dollar twenty-five increase. So overall, for the residential customer, the bill's going up a dollar seventy-five. Uh, no other changes to any other fees or rates. It's just those three. I think that's, you know, pretty good and restrained. So what does that look like for a bill? So the average bill for less than like no consumption, which is less than a thousand gallons a month is, was seventy-one dollars. It's going to seventy-two, seventy-five. The next column, which is the three thousand gallons monthly consumption, this is what is more typically average, you know, what we expect most homes to go through. So that bill's going from eighty-eight seventy to ninety-one eight. So overall, the average bill's increasing by about three percent. So we've been holding that. If you go back.
Get that under ninety dollars. So we didn't have to hear about it.
Well, we
Eighty-nine ninety-nine.
Yeah, eighty-nine ninety-nine.
And keep in mind, most of that is in, is in trash and they're, they're just as costs associated with that, but.
And can I ask a question? Is, is most of the, like the commercial here or the, here on Main Street, are, are there meters bigger than the normal residential meter?
I don't, I'm not a hundred percent sure on that. Their, their water bill is likely bigger because their tough fee is a little more.
Okay. I was, yeah, because I was wondering, does their water bill's bigger? A lot of it's more.
And commercial pays, I, they, they get billed sewer consumption based on their actual usage. Where an average residential is averaged over the winter months because we don't, you know, we don't meter sewer. And so like especially downtown, all the commercials, they don't, they're not watering a yard. Right? So if you're using water, the thought is if you're using water in a commercial building, it has to go down the sewer because you're not watering a yard. So at your house, we, we average the winter months because in thinking in the winter, you're mostly using the water for things that go down the sewer. You know, you're not washing your car as much in the winter. You're not watering the lawn. You're not, your kids out, aren't out there on the slip and slide or filling up pools or things like that. So that's the bit, the bigger difference. Questions on rates or? This will be going out in, uh, starting this week in the bills, uh, the notice of rate increases. So this is generally, I mean, y'all see those other rate increases that, that all the other utilities are doing. We're still way below what all the other utilities are. And we are still averaging below inflation. So the year that inflation was nine percent, our bills went up one and a half percent. And in most cases, they went down a little bit because we reduced the consumption rate. So if you remember, the consumption used to be three twenty-five per thousand gallons. Right now it's a dollar ninety, uh, two ninety-five per thousand. So we've moved some of it onto the base rate, but we're, so we're just now kind of getting back up from after we, we reduced that uh, four years ago. On the expenditure side, both uh, both general fund and water sewer fund are balanced. So it's been a while since we've been able to say that because we've been spending down excess reserves. So you know, our expenditures have looked a lot more than our revenue. We'll talk about fund balance in a minute, but this year they are balanced. So we're anticipating expenditures in the general fund at twenty-one million, two hundred and sixty-seven, six seventy-five, just like we are with revenue. Uh, the biggest increase there is uh, firing MS, which is thirty-eight point one six increase for those eight positions. But overall, that's just a three point five percent increase on total expenditure. Uh, in the water sewer fund, it's a decrease of fifteen point three percent, but most of that is because we did the big transfer last year to uh, pay for part of the swimming pool project, Johnson Park. So this year that is going away. So the interfund transfers are down eighty-nine percent in this budget. What is? So this year that is going away. So the interfund transfers are down eighty nine percent in this budget. What is remaining is the three hundred and forty four thousand dollar transfer to the INS for the. Short term debt, the tax note that we took out to finish the city hall. When you look at the general fund, so general administrations, that's uh admin, accounting, planning, development, I T. Their expenses are only going up one point five one percent. Uh, public safety is seven point three one percent. That's police, fire, fire mitigation, fire EMS, animal control, uh, code enforcement. So that's going from. Twelve point seven million to thirteen point six million. So as you can see, almost sixty five percent of our expenses are in public safety. So these aren't, uh, most of these costs aren't necessarily going to. But sometimes I know the state or other people might think is is social programs or anything like that. They're going straight to public safety, which is always one of the big feedbacks that we get as a priority. Culture and recreations, that's parks, golf course and recreation. That's one point eight million. That's down one point five nine. Most of that is because of lowered capital. We finally replaced most of Parks trucks, so they're getting a few trucks. They were way, way behind. So that's slightly down, but we still have some capital projects coming to the youth center. Public works is three point seven million or down five point five one percent. That's also because of lower capital, uh, costs and some of the. Most of that is, remember last year, we got a new automatic side loader truck. There was four hundred and. A whole lot. Little over four hundred thousand dollars. This year we're back to just getting the commercial side loader, which is the dumpster truck. That's still about two hundred thousand dollars, about half the price. So most of that savings is just because we we have reduced the capital, but we don't have a four hundred thousand dollar truck to buy. We only have a two hundred. When we look at these expenditure expenditures and how they relate to personnel. So these are the personnel changes in the budget this year. So in the general fund, there are eight positions added for fire EMS to staff that third ambulance. I didn't put a slide in here, but I, you know, when we're talking about EMS, if you recall that, uh. When AMR requested a subsidy, that was going to be a six hundred and seventy thousand dollar subsidy a year. Last year we lost, uh, two hundred and forty six thousand. Uh, this year we're projected to lose about two hundred and sixty thousand. There, the annual escalation would have put their EMS subsidy this year a little over seven hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. And so we're saving about five hundred thousand dollars a year and operating it ourselves. We're about to get a third ambulance twenty four seven. AMR was giving us one and a half. Right? And so as we talk about in the future and, you know, that definitely has a possibility of benefiting our ISO rate and 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 of course, we still gotta get some of those positions. Uh, funded. They are not, all eight of those positions are not funded starting October one. They are spread out over the course of the year. You know, we're not going to be able to, we're not going to be able to hire eight people on October one. So to make the budget balance, we have spread those out just a little. A water sewer fund is adding an HR specialist. You know, as we've added more people, it's becoming harder to manage the benefits and all the HR needs. Uh, so we're adding that HR specialist. We're also adding the media specialist that we talked about. That person's going to really be focusing on the video aspect of public engagement, those how to videos highlighting what we're doing, you know, engaging the public, you know, in a lot of those ways and. I've been trying to force, you know, or trying to get Deidre to do a lot more of that stuff. Problem is, is that video is very time consuming. And so, uh, this will give us that dedicated position. And I know that a lot of people, yeah, of course, Deidre's excited about that. And I know that, uh. Nicole's excited about that too. But I mean, even the public safety departments are excited about that, that, you know, as we. Get out there and engage and show the public more what we're doing. I think that'll help us and and have budget videos about what the budget's going and where it's going and take. Time with that. There are some cities that do some. Cute things with that. One city here last year did a World of Warcraft budget presentation. Now, I don't think I'm that fun. And don't expect to see me in a costume playing a character just to uh educate better on the budget, but. We'll see what the what that happens. Economic development, uh, following their economic development strategic plan, they've added a economic development specialist coming out of the sales tax for that. Uh, that is budgeted October one, but they're still debating on when and how that timing will look like and what the job responsibilities will be. So there's not necessarily a full guarantee there, but it is held in the budget. What's changing in our compensation, uh, program? So the biggest thing that we've talked about, and you've got an action item later on, they did on that, is changes to the Texas, Texas municipal retirement system. Uh, the state legislature made a change to the legis, enabling legislation for TMRS this year that allowed a new contribution rate of eight percent. Uh, previously you were limited to five, six or seven percent. Uh, we have been doing two to one of seven percent for pretty much as long as TMRS has been enabled. Uh, so this year they added the eight percent. Uh, we did some polling and talking to our employees. And, uh, the feedback was generally that they would prefer the increase in their retirement benefits versus the increase in their salary. Which is the smart play. Uh, those retirement benefits are compounded by five percent annual interest. We are a defined contribution plan. That means that every year, whatever goes in gets five percent interest regardless of what the market. The market performance, overperformance or underperformance is then tied to what the city then makes up. So we do two to one of. We're doing two to one of seven percent, which means our match should be fourteen percent, but we are paying like fourteen point six nine because we were making up for some of that funded liability. But prior, there were, we got down to like twelve point eight percent. For a couple of years, even though our contribution is fifteen percent. Well, that is adjusted annually. So if the stock market performs well, we do still realize the savings, but every employee's account is credited with five percent regardless of what the market does. And so that's normally when the market is performing poorly, that's when city employees are super excited because they don't have to worry about it when everybody else at the plant is worried about what their four oh one Caleb. So TMRS is one of the biggest benefits that we provide. And I think one of the best recruitment aspect, recruitment and retention aspects that we have. It is pretty much modeled across the country and recognizes as the best municipal retirement system out here. Uh, we are well funded. This is not, this is not like all those that you hear on the news about in California and like the city of Dallas. Those are not. TMRS, those are not state funded systems. Those were local systems that were managed by local boards. That made less than desirable plan decisions based on. What they wanted at the time. So we're over eighty percent funded. The likelihood of every city employee that's. In that that funding percentage is based on the fact that every city employee that's eligible for retirement will end up retired. From the city. And you know, that's not going to happen. So TMRS considers anything over eighty percent as a positive funding ratio. We're eighty six percent funded right now. If we make this change going to eight percent, we'll drop down to eighty one percent, but over the next few years, we will build that back up. So it's not a concern. I just kind of wanted to throw that out there. So in doing that, we go to eight percent. We're going to be one of the fewer cities around here that does eight percent. I think there again, which will help our recruitment and retention. In positions and we're continuing to invest in our employees. Uh, to offset that increase, there is also a one percent cost of living adjustment. Because if we raise the TMRS rate to eight percent, that means we're going to take eight percent out of an employee's check for their contribution instead of seven. So we're going to do a one percent cost of living adjustment to compensate for that one percent. So that way, they're not losing any money. They wouldn't have been losing it anyway, because it would have been going into their TMRS account. But this way, what they're making at the end of the month stays close to same. So we're not, you know, causing any undue hardship. We did a budget of nine percent increase in health insurance. So, uh, in our last weekly update email, I think I kind of talked, we did our midyear review on our health insurance and it was, uh, looking a lot better than I. Was kind of worried it was going to be. Right now we're at a a loss rate of point eight eight. What that means is for every dollar we've paid in, the plan has paid out eighty eight cents. So the target for most private insurance providers is point eight five. So we're really close to being on target. So I I do not anticipate a big change in in our rates going forward. So that gives us a little bit of flexibility in our budget amounts because I'm thinking that's going to be closer to a three percent increase now instead of the nine percent that is budgeted. However, if we do save that money, my plan is to pass that back to employees by increasing the amount we pay into their H R A or their H S A. So right now, it with depending on which plan you get, an employee has a a health retirement account or a health savings account. If we do recognize the full six percent savings, we'll probably go up fifty bucks a month into the H S A and the H R A. The employee can then use for their health. So since we've already got it budgeted for their health, only makes sense for me to to give it. Uh, we've given that, we've given it back as as bonuses in previous years when we've had big time changes. This is not a big savings. So I think it'll be better just to keep it in their H R A, H S A, and they still have access to it. They can build it and then they can use it for health. The last big change in our personnel is increasing the longevity pay. Currently it's forty eight dollars per year of service. Out each paycheck. So what that works out to is two dollars per year of service per. So what we're going to do is we're going to go up to ninety six dollars per year of service and we're not going to pay it over each paycheck. We're going to do it once. As one lump sum in November, uh, late November, December, sometime around Christmas. So everybody's pay will be going down maybe just a little bit. There again, like I said, it's two dollars per year of service. So at ten years. You're going to lose twenty dollars in your pay, each paycheck, but and then in December, if you've been here for ten years, you're going to get like eight hundred and fifty and one check. So I think most people, uh, they're not going to miss that twenty dollars. I think having an extra eight hundred dollars all at once around Christmas will will be a big thing. Overall, that's not a big change to us. Total full time positions in this budget are increasing, uh, by eleven. There's a little typo, but that's some more of that Tuesday on a Monday. From a hundred and eighty eight to a hundred and ninety nine.
I'm not going to say that I didn't know about this, but I'm going to say I don't remember a lot of. Uh, so. What is that person going to be doing?
They're wanting to do a lot of the things that like what we're doing with.
Is this a board, the board wanting to do this?
The board voted on the on the budget and it was suggested in the strategic plan. And so really what they're wanting to do is it's going to be hired at that specialist one level. So I believe that the goal is to kind of increase their public engagement and education too, giving someone that can go. Talk to businesses, tell them what what projects and programs the E D C has, uh, do the social media outreach, do the public engagement side of that thing and to follow up more on the retention side. Most, some of it's feedback from other areas. Uh, Dumas E D C has three employees, Pampa E D C has three employees. So that's part of it. Then we do tend to lag behind in. Social media engagement and direct business contact. And so that's the, that's the goal for it. Other questions on personnel? What that looks like, uh, by fund, and this is just kind of a breakdown by department, you know, if you're. Looking at wanting to kind of know where all of our personnel is. So general administration, that's fifteen people. It's been, uh, fifteen people for the last two years. It was, uh. Seventeen back in twenty twenty three. And, you know, some of that is we have reduced positions in accounting as we've we've reorganized and and kind of streamlined some of that stuff. So it's. I sometimes feel funny when I talk about personnel because like five years ago, when I first became city manager, my goal was to get personnel down. And now I've added more people. Now granted, there have been very specific reasons for that, you know, EMS was a big chunk of that. That's almost twenty of those positions. Uh, but we have in in non new service areas for the most part, uh, reduced. So accounting's down, administration is down just a little bit from twenty twenty one. Uh, the municipal court's down to one full time employee and one part time employee from what was five full time employees. So I know when we talk about employees, it'll seem like a lot of numbers, but we have been very. Conservative in in when and how we add people, but there's, there's not a way to provide EMS without adding people. And a lot of that, uh, at the police department, we've gone up some at the police department, just three in the last four years. We've gone up a little bit bit more than that, but that was for SROs. That the school is reimbursing us for. So. I will say this, in my five years as city manager, until we added the two positions this year, HR and the media specialist, we have not added another position that did not have some form of revenue offset. And we have reduced. And really, that HR position that we're adding back is really kind of just. When we moved HR, we took away a payroll clerk and combined them into one position. So we're really just kind of going back, uh, having two positions to do that role instead of one. Overall, I think we're still trying to be fairly efficient with personnel. Uh, the other one that's kind of new there is the last year we added the, uh, specialist in the venue fund for the dome to give Nicole some help. So there again, there is a revenue offset that. So when we break that down, so there it is, sixty four percent of our general fund expenditures are for public safety, seventeen percent for public works. If we add in the tough or how much we spend on streets, you know, that's another. Million dollars. So that takes it up to about twenty six percent. And we'll talk some more about those projects in a little bit. General administration is nine point less than ten percent. So. Ten percent to run everything, you know, for administrative costs is a is a kind of, kind of a standard. So we're right there. So I think we're pretty good with that. Culture and recreation is eight point seven. Going a little more detail into the, uh, water sewer fund. These are changes by department. Uh, accounting's, uh, going up four point three eight percent. Most of that is, uh, increase in audit expenses. It it seems like a lot, but it's twenty thousand dollars. It's not, it just their department's so small, it it inflates that percentage. So. That's not just a whole lot. Utility billing, uh, most of that is, uh, software increases and the maintenance costs of software. And then keep in mind that we are funding the step increases for every employee. So if if the department has got some longevity in it, there is a little bit based in in that. Uh, water distribution is going up only point three six percent. That's because of, uh, they don't have as much capital this year. Uh, and their salaries, they've had a little bit of turnover and that that's kind of been one of our department, a lot of turnover. It's been the same spot, but that's one that. I don't know what people think water distribution does and what they think they. I I don't think they think they are going to have to work and then they find out they've got to get in a hole with water. And then they decide it's not for them. So there's, you know, definitely a little bit of a of some issue there. Uh, wastewater collection. Is up twenty two percent. Most of that is, uh, capital cost as we're replacing the screw pumps and covering a little bit of rental costs. Uh, why we're, uh, waiting for that screw pump to get built. Water production and treatment, three point eight five percent. Your biggest increase in that fund is the utilities for wells and chlorine. That's a big chunk in the wastewater collection too. The we, the price of chlorine has. Drastically gone up. And so the our costs have definitely been, uh, increasing there. Wastewater treatment up eleven point five percent. Uh, utility administration nineteen point eight three percent. That's the two new positions that are impacting that percentage. Uh, and then water sewer operational support is down five point three percent. So that's a little bit with how, uh, we're doing capital. So we're, we've got more capital in the departments this year, the more capital construction, which is in that operational support. And then of course you'll see non departmental, those are the transfers are down by eighty eight point nine nine percent. That's down from three point one to three hundred and forty four thousand. And again, we are budgeted or balanced budget on this fourteen million dollars. That's down, uh, fifteen percent this year. Questions on water sewer? Government wide, this inclu, this funds in all those other little, uh, little departments. Uh, forty four million, seven hundred and eighty five total. That's compared to the forty one million in total revenue that we showed on the revenue slide. But keep in mind, we do have three million still budgeted in the water sewer capital construction fund that we set aside to drill those wells. Well, that's where most of the difference is, is that that money's sitting there because as we've, we've had excess reserve, we've moved it into those capital funds. So the capital improvement fund of five point one eight eight. That's that extra three million dollars has been sitting in the bank as we get ready to drill those wells. So that's the. The biggest difference in in that. There is a still some money in in Fund sixty five that's carrying over. You know, we've got a ambulance we've been waiting for. So there's four hundred, a little over four hundred thousand dollars that was budgeted last year that's carrying over to this year. So we, that fund's going to buy two ambulances, but one of them was funded this year. We've just moved the money. Into that fund. So that's not revenue, that revenue is not coming in now next year. The revenue came in this year, but the expense is hitting next. And so we'll talk a lot about that when we get to the fund balance slide, which, you know, is the money in the bank. But you see how that goes. And so overall, we've got eleven point five nine percent of. And so overall, we've got eleven point five nine percent of expenditures are going into capital improvements. Eight hundred twenty-eight, there again is the debt service, that's e equal and even to the revenue. Uh, EDC, if you remember, they've budgeted a little more expense than expenditure as they plan on doing their capital constructions. They've got a matching grant, uh, they've got funding set aside for that EDA grant and the continuation of some housing incentives. Uh, if you recall, last year we developed, uh, they adopted a, a, a pretty negative budget because of Yucca State and some of that stuff. Well, again, when you get the fund balance, you see cash in the bank, there's, they've still got more than a million dollars cash in the bank. So they're just, uh, funding some extra for those capital projects and building renovations now. Enterprise fund is thirty-one percent of our total expenditures. That's the water sewer fund, general funds, forty-seven percent.
They're using some of their reserve or their money in the bank.
Right.
To do some of the buildings that they've.
Right, yeah. They've got funding to finish the, uh, they've still got some work at the ranch, the the putting in the sprink- the sprinkler system, I think is budgeted in there. They're, uh, trying to get a roof on the building next to it, so it stops deteriorating. Uh, they've still got some plans for the Sazons building, the old Sazons building. And then they've had got a little bit, I think, planned for, uh, their three buildings right. And then they're still trying to, uh, they've got some set aside for, uh, land purchase if something were to come up. And a lot of that is in business incentives, you know, they budget a lot of money for business incentives just in case it comes that isn't there, that the mayor may not be spending on. And then when you look at expenditures by function, uh, capital constructions, nine point four percent. Culture recreation, four point three percent, general administration, four point six three percent of our overall expenditures. Non-departmental is nine point nine five percent. Uh, those are your debt payments and your Cremois payments that don't, don't get assigned to a specific department. Public safety overall of all funds is still thirty-three percent of our expenditures. Public works, eight point two seven, water sewer, uh, thirty point four nine. So when we look at revenues and expenditures over, over the last couple of years, you can see that, that when we talk about having excess reserves, a lot of that is because in the end we perform positive. So on those, uh, years where the, so the blue is what we actually spent, the black is what we budget. And so a lot of that's been our capital programs that have taken longer. So, you know, starting in twenty twenty-two, we started budgeting Tenth Street and because of the gas company, what was supposed to be a nine-month project turned into, you know, a year. So that spanned over two budget years. You know, we've budgeted for the well replacements now for three years and we've been, you know, delaying that. But overall, you can see in most instances, our revenue has exceeded our expenditures. And so the gray is actual revenue. So when gray is above actual, uh, is above blue, that's act. And so in twenty twenty-one, you can see we even made more revenue than we budgeted. In twenty twenty-two, we made more revenue than we budgeted. Twenty twenty-three, we made more revenue than we budgeted. In all three of those years, we spent less money than we budgeted. And so what's that has led to over the last couple of years are an increase in fund balance. So fund balance is that cash in the bank. But what we're projecting at the end of this current fiscal year, starting twenty twenty-six for the general fund is cash in the bank of five million, two hundred and fifty-four thousand, one hundred and nineteen dollars. Now, there's still a month left there, I mean, it'll fluctuate some, but not drastic. And so in those years where we spent more, where we've had more expenses than revenue, that was that planned spin down. So you can see that they compared to where our reserves were in fiscal two thousand and eleven at just over one and a half million dollars. We've continued to build that and continue to invest in our community by reducing the amount of debt that we've made over that time. Same thing is true in the water sewer fund. So that's a little over four million dollars is what we're projecting to start the budget year with. That is after our transfer out to support the youth center project, the wells and the other capital projects that we've been doing at water sewer. So the next slide, I think, is kind of what, what kind of matters. This is cash in the bank amongst all funds, so that the projected column is what we think we're gonna end the year at. So that's five point two five four one one nine in general fund. The reserve requirement is the twenty-eight percent of budgeted expenditures, the non-capital budgeted expenditures, the council has set. So for twenty twenty-five, that's four point nine million dollars. So we're anticipating ending the year, three hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars over our required reserve amount. Now, if you remember last year, this time when we were having that, we budgeted ending with a small deficit because we'd added all that EMS cost, remember? And so I said, I thought we'd be able to make up most, if not all of it in how we operated and what money we saved, it looks like that's true. So now in the budgeted column, you're seeing next year's fund balance, required fund is five million, four hundred and forty-five thousand. There again, that once again is tied to the increase in EMS because that's increasing personnel costs, which is driving that reserve amount up. So the reserve requirement is almost five hundred and fifty thousand dollars more in twenty-six than it was in twenty twenty-five. So right now, we're projecting a hundred and being a hundred and ninety thousand dollars short. If revenue and expenditures hit budget. So there again, I do think we'll be able to hopefully have some good composite perform- performance and end the fun year quote, a little closer to that reserve. But I also, as we've talked about, you know, I think investing in EMS and public safety, if we're, that takes us, that takes us from like twenty-eight percent reserve to like twenty-seven point three percent reserve. So even if we're a hundred and ninety percent, a hundred and ninety thousand dollars short from that twenty-eight percent target, that is still more than the twenty-five percent target that the council had prior to us changing that two years ago. So, and it it's just, it's hard for us unless we budgeted a surplus budget on purpose to increase that up. You know, if we increase expenses, it's gonna be hard to drive that up. And we've just, I think the fact that we've stayed that close to it, EMS is, is more than a two million dollar budget. But we've taken on more than two million dollars in added expense, which twenty-five percent of that's seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars or, uh, five hundred thousand dollars. So that's in in less than a year, we've made most of that up. So I think that's still being, being pretty good. Uh, water sewer, our required reserve is three million, five hundred and seven thousand. We're projecting to end this year, five hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars over that amount. Uh, next year's amount would be three point seven million. Uh, we're projecting to end about three hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars over that reserve amount. You've got all the other funds in there, you can get down to the very bottom of the special revenue fund is economic development. We're ex- we're, uh, projecting them to end the year at one point four five three, so one point four million dollars. So you can see that, uh, even with their negative budget, they are still budgeted to end the year with a million dollars in the bank. That's a fifty percent reserve requirement out of their operating budget. Overall, we're anticipating to end this year with sixteen point two million dollars in the bank. Uh, next year, that goes down to thirteen million after we do those capital projects. To put that in perspective, our reserve requirement next year total is nine million, one fifty-one. So all funds considering, even with us investing in that capital next year, we're still almost four million dollars above the required reserve amount. So I know we look at a lot of those swings, but we're still, we're still very good. Uh, a lot of that over the last couple of years has been driven by employee shortages. You know, we've been budgeting for full staff, but we've not been able to fill them. And then of course, you know, COVID money and 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 some of that stuff. So this chart doesn't go back far enough, but prior to about twenty seventeen, money in the bank was eleven million. And so we're gonna end this year at thirteen million, which is still, which is back to what is a more normal amount for us to have sitting in the bank without any, uh, debt issuances or some unplanned, uh, change. Questions? Like I, I did this last year and I kind of wanted to do it again, is put some demographics behind all of this information because I think sometimes that kind of helps people, you know, understand why we're investing and what we're investing, what we're doing. So our population, uh, in twenty twenty-three, which is the latest year available for the American Community Survey, twelve million, uh, twelve million. I'm way underpaid if I'm managing twelve million people. Uh, twelve thousand, three hundred and ninety-eight, which is down just a little bit. You'll notice in that chart that our population kind of has started, our population kind of started to stabilize just a little bit. Of course, as we've invested in housing, where, of course, we're trying to change that. Our daytime population last year was projected at thirteen, three fifty-one, this year thirteen, seven twenty-five. I put both of those in there because that continues to show that we have more people working here than we do living. And so if we want our tax rates to go down, if we want high level of services, you know, we've got to get housing for people to start living here. Uh, we're still maintaining the same number of streets as we were when we, when there were twenty-two thousand people living in the city. We're maintaining the same mileage of water and sewer lines as there were. We're main, everything, nothing, the infrastructure we have to maintain has not changed, but our population has shrank by almost half. Which means more people, less people are covering the cost of all of that. So why is it important to invest in housing? That's why. We've got a good economic base, that daytime population shows that because more people are coming in. Now we need to get some of that, uh, fifteen hundred people that are coming in every day to stay here overnight. And so I think I just kind of wanted to point that out. When you look at our population by age bracket, I like this chart pretty well. We're a lot more diverse than than I think a lot of people think, you know, they like to think that this is an old retirement town. It is not. You know, actually, our two biggest cohorts are twenty-five to thirty-four and thirty-five to forty. So I think we're spread out pretty well. So I think, you know, that, that does relate. Now, I think where we sometimes get the feel that we might be in older communities, because, because what we don't know is uh, how many, what would change in these if those be, if we got more people to live here? But this is actually what's living here. So we're definitely not as old as what what people think. We have four thousand, we had four thousand and sixty-eight households last year. This year we have forty-two hundred and eighteen. But we have filled up some vacant homes and and filled up a few things. Forty-five percent of those are family households. Fifty percent of residents are married, twenty-seven percent are single and nineteen percent are senior living alone. So we are below the state average for family households. There again, I think that's part of that, you know, what lives here versus what travels here. Which means we're not only missing out the spending of that one person, we're missing the spending for that whole family. Uh, singles, uh, twenty-seven percent, that's nine percent higher than state average. And our senior living alone is forty-three percent higher than our state average. So why that is a smaller number, it is a larger number compared to the state average at mine, is is some of those. Talk about housing, the median household income, uh, median household value's gone, is up to ninety thousand dollars now. So that's, I think we all see that in the appraisals and and how that's, that's happening. Uh, in Borger, seventy-six percent own their residence, twenty-four percent rent. The state average is sixty-three percent owned, thirty-seven percent. Uh, how median household income is fifty-nine thousand, which is, uh, below the state average. This is where we talk about when we look at, our average weekly wage is above the state average. But average weekly wage is for every job in this county, regardless of where the employee lives. Our average household income is below the state average. So what that means is most of the people that are, that that work here but don't live here are the higher wage workers. And so there again, that puts an add, uh, uh, unfair pressure on the services because we're providing services to more, a more needy community than the more higher income community. And so that's when you talk about why we're addressing, what type of housing we're addressing, part of that's the reason because we're not missing the bottom gap, we're missing the top tier. And so we're trying to kind of correct. Overall, our revenues, twenty-two point three million on average, that's seventeen hundred and twenty-six per capita, which is ten percent higher than similar towns. Some of that's our industrial district contracts that other cities don't have, so we are able to provide some of those other s- uh, services. However, twenty point eight million or sixteen hundred and ten per capita in expenses. So that's only four percent higher than, uh, the average cities. Th- this is a comparison, don't worry that they don't match, that's kind of not how the census data work. But what's that showing is that that we are generally more efficient with our funding than cities closer to us, because we've got, while we've got ten percent more revenue, we've only got four percent more. So we're passing that along in other investments. As we get into the capital projects for this year, here's kind of a list of the capital equipment that is in the general fund. So in animal control, uh, we've got some funding for new cat adoption cages and the initial architectural study. Uh, we've talked about the, uh, this money split between the general fund and the water sewer fund because the office building at the wastewater plant was built in the nineteen fifties. And so it's, it in the lab and the, uh, service shop area of that have reached its end of its serviceable life. So we're, we need to do something with that. It makes more sense to build a new animal shelter and then renovate the old animal shelter into a new office for the wastewater plant since it's right there at the entrance to the wastewater plant. And so this budget includes the architectural study to kind of come up with space plans and get us a price point for for all those projects so that we can decide how to move forward, uh, into fiscal twenty-seven. Uh, the fire department's got nine thousand dollars for some driveway improvements. This is again on the, uh, kind of the backside, the, a lot of their driveway is pavement, but those trucks weigh a lot. So we're slowly over, over a couple of years, been replacing more of that pavement with concrete to help take the pounding of all those heavy fire trucks. Code enforcement's got a new, uh, compact truck. Uh, these are like the little Chevy Silverados you've seen. Uh, I know sometimes we get dinged for new vehicles. We are buying what is most cost-effective for the roll. That's why you see a compact truck there, but I will remind everybody that because we've invested in newer equipment, our maintenance costs are down by thirty percent, which is saving almost two hundred thousand dollars every single year. So when we do make these decisions, we are looking at the long. And then a zero-turn mower, uh, they replace one of those every year. Those are the mowers you see mowing the right-ofways. I know that we get a little bit of feedback this year, you know, I talked about that last year with the amount of miles they mow and only so much you can do. Uh, but that's just to keep up with the, uh, with the, uh, normal replacement of those two. So they've got two mowers, we replace one each year because they are, uh, well-used in that year. Uh, they also, if you notice, they get a little different mower than what what we're buying in the parks department. They're a little more expensive because they do have a thicker deck and they have rear discharge, because when we're mowing in the right-ofways, we need rear discharge. So you're not throwing the rocks and everything out into oncoming traffic. And they need a thicker deck because why, uh, while some people might disagree, the amount of debris in the right-ofway is way different than the amount of debris in a park. And so there's all sorts of crap in the right-ofway and those, in those dick bar ditches that they mow. So they get worn out pretty good. And the parks department, we've got a hundred thousand dollars budgeted, one for a three-quarter ton truck and then also our sports field assessment. So this is gonna be our first, uh, we're gonna have a park kid probably come in and identify projects for all of our youth sports fields as we work towards that net, neck, you know, whether we want to put them in front of the public or a bond issuance or how we want to deal with that. We need to know exactly kind of what some things are gonna cost and what some things that we need to do. Uh, we need their help in that because there are certain ADA requirements that come in on some of that stuff. We, I don't know what all of that is, so, so we've got about fifty thousand dollars budgeted for that. So fifty-five thousand for the truck, fifty thousand dollars for that sport assessment. And that will assess all, all sports fields. So that's the Huber Park baseball field, that's all of Agnes Howe, that's all of Johnson Park, all the city-owned fields. So this is kind of the first step and we've talked about that with some of the public comment going forward to see what investment we need. So that is in this budget. Uh, emergency management has thirty-six thousand dollars for a diesel trailer. That goes to support the, the two new generators we've got planned for dispatch and for city hall as we slowly convert those diesel. Uh, that diesel trailer can also support emergency response by being able to haul diesel for fire trucks that are out fighting wildfires, the mobile command, uh, truck that we've got now. So there's, I think there's a lot of good reasons for us. It is small enough to be pulled by a pickup truck and under the hazmat, uh, placard requirement, so. In streets, we've got a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, that is a new one-ton flat, flat bed and then some, uh, what I'm just grouping together as winter weather response equipment. So that's, uh, brine spreaders and some more sanders. So as we start next year, we're gonna invest a little more in that. We kind of feel like we're getting into a wetter, colder winter pattern. And so we're gonna invest in some, some stuff and talking with Jason and Public Works where we felt. And so we're gonna invest in some, some stuff and talking with Jason in Public Works where we feel it's better to invest in those, that's why it kinda goes with. With the new flatbed, we'll have three of those one-ton flatbeds. And so that during the summer, they can, they can haul things and do whatever you want. During the winter, we can strap the sand salt spreaders and the brines and the, uh, snow plows on the front of them. And so it's a lot easier, a lot cheaper. To equip those one tons than it is to equip a dump truck. And s- they get around parking lots better, they get around smaller city streets better, since the state's still doing most of the major highways. Uh, so that is in, in, Central Dispatch has the sixty-five thousand dollars for their general generator replacement. Uh, there is a chance we might be able to get some of that reimbursed through the nine-one-one funds available through the PRPC, since that is our nine-one-one dispatch center. Uh, we are looking into that. In recreation, we have eighty-seven thousand dollars budgeted, uh, some for some, uh, ballroom repairs in the dome, following a little water leak we had. And then, uh, replacement, so we have to replace all of the AC units at the youth center. There are, it's actually forty thousand dollars worth of work, we're doing some of that, and this, we're reallocating some of the capital this year. Uh, and, and gonna split it over this year and next year, so there's twenty thousand dollars, uh, forty thousand dollars in there for the part of, part of that. Just kinda remind you, we've said a lot during the swimming pool, but those are still original to the renovation in oh-six. So those units are almost twenty years old. Fire mitigation has a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars for a crew module pickup. This is replacing the, what they call the buggy. Which is the big kinda bus looking thing, so there, this is, this will be just a, a one-ton crew cab with a big service body on it to haul all of their equipment. So it'll be easier to maintain than that big international, uh, buggy, but a lot of the cost, it, it is the, the custom. Bed thingy to hold all the saws and all the, and then like when they go out, all their stuff, so lots, lots of storage. It's a fully enclosed. Over cab bed on it, so it's. Pretty substantial little thing. In a fire EMS, we have five hundred and twelve thousand dollars budgeted, that's an ambulance. Uh, IV pumps, ventilators, and a new Life Pack thirty-five. So if you recall, we bought one Life Pack thirty-five last year, that's the newest cardiac monitor. So we're gonna have to start kinda budgeting those. Uh, there's ten thousand for the IV pumps and two thousands for the ventilator, that will allow us to take critical care transports. So we do expect those to recover some cost, being able to, to take those higher levels. And then four hundred thousand of that is the ambulance and related equipment. And if you recall, we have four ambulances on order right now. We're hoping to get the first one that was budgeted in our current budget year, probably by December. This one budgeted next year, I think it'll be shortly thereafter, which will be in February. So our goal staffing three ambulances is to eventually get five ambulances, because then we can start sending them off to be remounted. When you remount them, you reuse the box and you put a new chassis under it, but that can still take about six months. So if we're operating three burst-out ambulances and we need one for a maintenance spare in case one of them goes down. That means we need that fifth one to be able to send it off to get remounted. And a remount is about. Less than half the price of a brand-new one, so we're spending about three hundred seventeen thousand dollars for ambulance right now, our remount's about a hundred and forty. So we will, once we get everything. Stocked up from our taking over the service, we will get into a, a better rotation of where we don't buy a new ambulance every year, we'll probably do. Remount one year, remount one year, new ambulance one year, remount, 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 new, and get through them that way. The, cause they, most of the, most of the wear and tear is just, you know, the two ambulances we bought two years ago are now over sixty thousand miles. Just cause they're going down Marlowe so much, so there's just a lot of miles, so we need to get in there, and so that's what we're doing. Of course, that is partially offset with what we charge, uh. Rich in the county for, and then with the revenue received from the ambulance. Uh, the other. Uh, program that Jeff's got signed up for, the, the, is the depreciation reimbursement, the supplemental, uh, revenue stream that will help offset some of that cost. In solid waste, there's three hundred forty-seven thousand dollars budgeted, that's a commercial side loader, so that's the dumpster truck. Uh, dumpsters and a poly, and additional poly cart, so that's another hundred and eight new dumpsters, you know, so we've been doing pretty regular, we've been keeping up with dumpster. I know there'll be some people that, that argue, but there are. Three thousand dumpsters. And we've been replacing a hundred and fifty a year. But that hundred and fifty is like a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And so we're definitely catching up, but it is, it's a, it's a long game, and then there's money, there is money in their operating budget for regal, uh, regular repair and bottom replacement and stuff. I do just kinda remind everybody that. Dumpsters are expensive. Uh, poly carts just kinda starting to replace those, that, you know, poly carts last a lot longer, you know, we've been getting seventeen to twenty years out of a poly cart, but you know, some of our poly carts are starting to. Get old, so we are starting to include a regular replacement. In the service center, they've got fifteen thousand dollars for replacement porta-coolers, those are, you know, keep servicing a little cooler, those are your evaporative coolers. Uh, in the police department's three hundred eighty-five thousand dollars in capital, that's, uh, most of this is kind of our normal routine, that's one police motorcycle, two. Marked Tahos, one unmarked Tahoe. Uh, this year, we're adding some money to try to get some covered parking. Uh, this'll be the, uh, kinda like what country has, the kinda fabric covers, so. Think the goal is to try to cover where the patrol cars sit. Yeah, long, just in front of the old, uh, the temporary building, not temporary anymore, but what was the temporary fire building? Uh, just in front of that, so that when the patrol cars aren't in use, uh, we can get them undercover, get them out of hell and try to save us some, some wear and tear on, on the vehicles. I will, uh. Pass along a little bit of a, of something Donnie told me here while back, that I think kinda speaks to, you know, investing in things and doing it right, but during that last hailstorm we had, uh. His guys are proud enough of their equipment now that, uh, they made sure to make sure that everything was parked under a bank or an old bank or a car wash or. Some sort of protection before the last big hailstorm came in, so that's. Take both kudos on them for thinking about that, but also I think, you know, kudos for the council for, you know, continuing to invest in, in quality that they actually do care about it and, and appreciate her taking care of it. Also started a part of the firearm replacement program for the police department, some of that will come out of the general fund, some of it will come out of seized assets funds. That's probably be a multi-year, uh, plan, we haven't bought a lot of firearms since. Before I left the PD, so they're, they're. Getting a ways up there, and some of them are even older than that, some of them, some of them were bought before I started. And then it continues the Motorola camera program, you know, we, we pay that annually and the days are also. In the water sewer capital, uh, hundred twenty-five thousand dollars for a new generator here at city hall. Again, these are, both these generators are over ten years old. Uh, the one here has some problems starting because the gas line wasn't. Properly, it's not big enough, but they wanted to set a separate gas, natural gas meter. So it's been struggling a little bit, it's got some other issues. There again, we talked about this, that. I'm not replacing them to get diesel, but since they need to be replaced. We're gonna replace them with diesel, because in an emergency, both in the winter storm in Lubbock and in the tornado in Perryton, they all lost natural gas. There is, in most cases, no natural gas. In a lot of the emergencies that you have, so it makes more sense to have, have diesel. And like what I've always said, if we lose natural gas. There isn't anything I can do to try to get natural gas back into the system. If we lose natural gas and it's, it's bad, I'm pretty, or I mean, if we lose power and we run out of diesel. I know where there's quite a bit of diesel stored pretty close and pretty close proximity, that in a big emergency, I'm pretty sure we could work out a deal. And so, yeah. Yeah, you want water, you're gonna give us, so I, I mean, I think, you know, the, for us and a lot of reasons, that makes sense. I think people think natural gas is better, cause it's, it's maybe more convenient, you don't have to think about it, it is, it is a little bit more convenient, but I think for us, diesel makes a lot more sense. Especially with the type of, of disasters that we are potentially prone to. That will also prevent us from having to redo the natural gas on this building and replumb all of that and rework it to get a second meter, so it, it, it. Makes a lot more cost-effective sense than to even, because even if we got a new natural gas generator, I would still have to fix that part of it. And then of course, I think that we all agree with, with this bad. Uh, the other thing in, in utility administration is new servers for city hall, so. Computers aren't cheap and we're just, the, the server downstairs is getting close to nine years old now, so it's. It is, the server we're using now is the brand-new one that we bought and had it quite installed when we had the ransomware attack. And so. Some of you on the council don't remember that, so that shows you how old the, that server is, but so like twenty, twenty-eighteen, so it's getting on eight, eight, nine years old, it's, uh, scheduled just for regular replacement. Wastewater collection, uh, there's part of their budget increases, that mini excavator. And so, you know, you see those, that's pretty much what they use on a day-in, day-out basis. Uh, so we've been, uh, replacing those more frequen- more frequently now, so that we have less maintenance and make sure that those are always a, a, available. They also have a trailer-mounted generator, their trailer-mounted generators are over twenty years old. Uh, these are the generators that they can haul out to a lift station to hook a lift station up, you know, in case a lift station is, is without power for a, a extended period of time. These are generators that are required by PCQ to make sure that we have that backup, so this is, we're finally trying to, yes. They've always been, the two we have now are diesel, they're just, they're old and kinda weird. We're gonna take some time to get this one spec a little better too, so that even for our events or some things like that, we can have access to a nice newer trailer-mounted generator for a bunch of different things. Water distribution, so that's a mini excavator for them as well, we bought the last two mini excavators the same year, so they're about four years old, so we've been trying to keep that on a. Five-year replacement cycle, that's when we kinda maximize the resale value of the old ones, offset the cost of the new ones. And then to keep our maintenance costs down, and then two, three-quarter ton trucks, so that'll be a supervisor truck and the well-field operator truck. And then wastewater treatment is that architectural study, uh, which is tied to the animal shelter and all of that, so that's the other. When we get to capital construction, what is in this budget is our twenty-twenty-six chip seal project, we've got four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars set aside for that, we'll talk about that a little more detail on the next slide. This is, we have submitted that grant, if you recall, the hazard mitigation grant for our third street stormwater improvement, this is where the roads eroding going through the wastewater plant. If you recall, we had funded that, the OPC on it was about five hundred thousand dollars, and we had that worked in the budget a couple of years ago, and the low bid came in at one point two million dollars. Uh, so we did not have the funds to do that, so we've been delaying it, so we have, uh, has, we've taken advantage of one of the hazard mitigation grants that we're available for and submitted that. It's, I think, still in step five of step seven, so it, it has progressed, so there's a decent chance. That we can get that, if we get that, we will have to fund a match of three hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. Uh, I don't expect that, the need to be funded until twenty-twenty-seven. Cause we still haven't been awarded the grant by the time we get the grant and get it out to bid and do all that stuff, we'll be well into, into that here. What we funded, and we've kinda talked about this late, uh, it's probably about to change, but we did fund the second street wastewater collection improvement, this was the next phase and, and the replacement of our concrete sewer lines. However, if you've seen them working, we've had a sewer line collapse under the cloverleaf. And so this money's gonna. Likely, we're not going to do the second street wastewater plant, but the budget process was so far along, I didn't wanna change it, we will just reallocate this to the cloverleaf wastewater project. Still wastewater project, the price will probably be, be similar. Right now, they've, they've got the survey done, they're trying to figure out and coordinate with Excel, we're hoping to be able to bore that. So that we don't have to disturb the cloverleaf. Too much, but it runs from about Bulldog Motor over to the ravine, uh, by the dome, just on the other side of Dollar General, so if you, yeah. Uh, we have moved the money that we awarded that project this year for wastewater treatment plant lifts one and two. So that's that three hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars, so that's just carried over into this year. If you recall, our OPC on that was almost a million dollars, and we had that very favorable bid come in on that project, so we're excited about that. We do have the Northwest Well Field Expansion at one point five million dollars, uh, budgeted again. So that is, uh, you know, we do have that well identified, we've got the permit into the DCQ, so we're just waiting for the permit to be issued, once the permit is issued, we can bid it out. We can't bid it out until the permit is issued. We also have the wildfire detection camera system, which was a one point seven million dollar grant, that one is waiting for FEMA, FEMA's final approval, so it's in step seven. So that other grant was in step five, this grant has made it to step seven, which is just FEMA sign. But we do anticipate that to be awarded, uh, the final. Scope of that, you know, we asked for as much money as we could. So I'm not for sure how we finally bid it out and what its scope, at the maximum amount, the grant, our match would be four hundred and twenty-five thousand. That's another one that I think would carry over into twenty-twenty-seven. Likely, our match for both of these would be included in the planned twenty-twenty-seven debt issuance. Uh, remember, we've talked, tried a few times about that coming up, and that we do have a fire truck that we've had to order thirteen hundred days in advance, and so that's coming up. The details of the tough projects for next year for the chip seal are Harrington Street, Stevens Street, Harvey, Bulldog, Huber, Indiana, Illinois, Jackson, Franklin, Lee, Lindsey, Johnson, and Keek Bush. Uh, I have left money in there, we, assuming that we like our micro-surfacing that should be happening in the next week or two, we will probably add some new micro-surfacing to that, and we'll probably, uh. Add a few other streets of that is, uh, uh, we're gonna add, uh, I know we need to add Airport Boulevard to that. And a, a few things, so we've got quite a few streets coming up for, for maintenance again next year, so we're continuing with. Questions or comments on the budget before you open the public hearing?
Go over how, how those streets.
So we did a street assessment back in twenty-eighteen, and so that used the little cameras and the lasers to kinda measure the damage to the streets. Then we did some traffic studies, cause we tried to take traffic counts into consideration, and so that's. About sixty percent of our decision, and then the other forty percent are we try to pick up streets in the same area while they're there. Uh, cause it can be more cost-effective to do some of that, that's why we started with ten street. And it's, and keep in mind that some streets are far enough gone that we don't wanna chip seal. But they might not have the traffic count to warrant reconstruction. So that's why we kinda still patch those, but we're trying to get through everything and, and we'll. Hit those as we can, but for the most part, that's why we kinda started with those, those big north-south streets, you know, McGee, Hedge Cove, Sixth Street. Uh, last year, we, or the year before, we did Broadmore, you know, this year we hit some of, some of those others, that's why you've kinda seen them. Kinda all around town, we are trying to do that based on the pavement index and the traffic. What else?
Um, I guess then we will conduct the public hearing. If, uh, anyone has anything to speak about. And if not, then we will close the public hearing. And, um, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve on final reading ordinance O dash zero one one dash two five, adopting the fiscal year twenty-twenty-six operating budget.
All in favor? And it passes. And, um, moving on to item number, um. Number ten, consider and take appropriate action to approve on final reading ordinance O dash. Zero one two dash twenty-five, am- amending the City of Borger's fee schedule for the fiscal twenty-twenty-six budget year. Mr. Sprellin.
So we cover that pretty well in the slideshow too, but I'll answer any other questions you might have.
If, if there's none, then I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve on final reading, artis. Old dash zero, dash one two, dash two five, amending the City of Borger Code of Artness, chapter one, general provision, article one dash zero seven fee schedule.
All in favor? And it passes. And then item eleven, consider and. Considering taking appropriate action on resolution R dash zero one six dash twenty-five, approving and adopting the fiscal year twenty-twenty-six through twenty-thirty Community Investment Program, Mr. Sprellin.
So what, uh, what we just talked about in the budget is year one, so you know, we try to adopt a five-year plan every year, uh. This identifies all the capital projects that we can think of or, or that we know, just because it is in here does not mean it will ever be funded. But we kinda need to keep an idea of what our needs are. So what we're talking mainly here now is year two through five. Some of them we know we need, some of them we've got funded, some of them we don't. So again, just remember that it's all out there, borger tx.gov, the CIP's link, there's public portals for all of that. And so a CIP, you know, identifies, prioritizes, and supports funding for essential capitals, you know, it allows us to highlight our goals and needs, it, it gives us some option to fund the. Fund the public, I know here lately, it's been really. fund the public. I know here lately, it's been really nice the last couple of years when things have spanned into more than one budget year, you know, because we needed, we bought the butt, we bought the ambulance last year, but we're not getting it till this year. So it's been kind of good at keeping up with that. Increases up program efficiency, you know, helps us identify funding and know what we need. We actually our bond rating companies take this into consideration. Are we planning for capital investment? Bond rating companies, SAP, Moody's, whatever you want to call them, they will actually, you can lose points for not having debt and not investing in your capital because the way they look at that is you're deferring necessary maintenance. And so if you're not investing back into your infrastructure, at some point, it's going to create a bigger financial problem than ongoing maintenance. And so they look at that to see that we have, do we have a program in place? Are we mindful of what needs to be done? And are we taking steps planned for the replacement and improvement of our cap? So last year, we started a scoring program to kind of help us keep keep things in line. So twenty four percent of that scoring is is doesn't impact public health and safety. So that's our number one consideration. So every, something that impacts public health and safety gets more points than anything else. Is there an operational impact? So is like something at the end of its service line, line, you know, if it's going to save us money, that's a positive operational impact that can help. If it's going to add money, that could be a negative and hurt the score. Regulatory compliance. Is there somebody making us do it? Quality of life, eighteen percent, you know, does this improve the quality of life? Infrastructure. Is it improving permanent, you know, ongoing infrastructure? So does, is this the water system? Is this a building? You know, is there something tangible to it? External funding. So if somebody else is paying for it, we're going to score it higher. So if there's grant available for it or grant funding, we're going to score it higher. And then beautification, does, does it make a impact on the community? The visual appearance of the community. And that comes out of the comp plan that comes back out of our public feedback. All of this relates back to what we've seen and making sure that that our capital projects are tying into what our goals and and strategies that we're trying to achieve. So right now, over the five year period, we have identified fifty nine point one million dollars of investment. Now, remember, that does not mean that they are funded. Does not mean we're going to get to do every single one of them in that five year period. But we know that we've got about fifty million dollars of of needs and wants. Of that, twenty four million of it are about forty percent is building some facilities. Roadways is another ten percent. Other improvements, that's kind of miscellaneous capital vehicles or not vehicles or, yeah, other improvements, no, vehicles and wheel equipment is sixteen percent. Other improvements is like equipment. Get into the details of some of that, but overall, fifty, about sixty million dollars is what we've identified. By department, you can see that out. So so I've kind of separated it out like thirty one, thirty one million in capital construction. So those are your big capital projects. Those were not assigning to a department. So like Main Street realignment is a capital construction project, a possible youth sports facility is a capital construction project. That's not under parks. That's under capital construction. Most of the departments are their wield and their vehicles and their equipment is what we assign to a to a depart. Street and alley has one street project assigned, which is why it's got the eleven million dollars is is part of that. When you take that by category, is there again, this just kind of breaks it out. Now we get to the funding side of things. So this is kind of where I wanted to kind of get with that. So seventeen percent is unfunded. Meaning there is no source available that we don't know how we're going to fund it. So a little over ten million dollars. Twenty one million dollars is going to require a debt issuance. That does not mean we are going to issue debt for it. That means the only way to fund it is a debt issuance. And so like the youth sports facility is in that category. Because with state law, it's the only way to fund it is with a debt issuance because you can't, you know, we don't make money off of it, things like that. Part of the unfunded, a lot of those are those stormwater projects. You know, we had the master drainage plan completed, and so we've added every single stormwater project that that plan identified into our capital plan. And so those are, those are unfunded. Because I'm not a hundred percent sure that we need I could have put them in debt, but I don't know that we need debt, want debt for them. But they're just kind of in unfund. And so that's just kind of where we're at. This is a real quick dirty overview. You know, there's a lot of details in the book. I had planned on having y'all printed copies of it. You've seen printed copies of it. I was going to give you the nice fancy printed fancy one with all the pictures and graphs, but since the big printer is broken, you didn't get that tonight, but that's the only thing you you haven't gotten. But like I said, I did just kind of want to, since you're going to kind of officially adopt it. Like I said, you're not legally locking us into anything. You are just adopting this as as our capital plan and the things that we're trying to get to. You legally adopted year one of that with the budget, which is what we went into so much detail.
Then if there's no questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve resolution R dash zero one six dash two five approving the fiscal year twenty twenty six to twenty thirty community investment program.
All in favor? And it passes. And then item item twelve, considering take appropriate action to introduce on first reading ordinance O dash zero one three dash twenty five increasing the Texas municipal retirement system employee contribution rate reauthorizing annually occurring updated service credits, transferring updated service credits and reauthorizing annually occur accruing annuity increases also referred to as cost of living adjustments for retirees and their beneficiaries. Mr. Spreddlin.
We talked a little bit about this in the budget presentation. So this is the actual ordinance and documentation required to change our contribution rate. Anytime a city changes their contribution rate, they also have to readopt the updated service credits and the retiree cost of living. We already provide those. And so all we're doing is reauthorize, there's, there's no change to those, but since we're changing the contribution rate, we also have to readopt those if we want to keep updated service credits. That's like, we give credit for military service if someone comes in towards their vesting. It also helps your annuity be kept factored on your three highest years of salary, not just based on what's in the system. So those are pretty big benefits. With this change, like we were before with the eight percent increase and readjusting all of this, we offer every benefit that TMRS has at the highest and best level. So there is not a better Texas municipal retirement plan available. Other questions?
If not, then I'll entertain a motion.
I move to introduce on first reading ordinance O dash zero one three dash two five increasing the employee contribution rate to eight percent and reauthorizing annual repeating update service credits and cost of living adjustment.
Favor. And it passes. Item thirteen, considering take appropriate action on a lease agreement between the city of Borger and Phillips Country Club for the use of the Borger Municipal Golf Course. Mr. Spreddlin.
So since Phillips donated the golf course to the city, the Phillips Municipal Country, Phillips Country Club, Inc. has been the nonprofit that's operated it in in totality of that time. Their lease agreement is up, so it's time to renew it. There are no major changes to this. It had been on a five year term that renewed automatically every year for up to five years. I've gone ahead and changed that to just no time limited. But there's still a sixty day cancellation clause, so I don't I don't see the purpose of coming back every five years if you can cancel it with sixty days notice at any time during the term.
And we can cancel it.
Yes, either side can cancel it with sixty days written notice. So since they can be canceled with sixty days, or if we need to change the terms for whatever reason, you can cancel it in sixty days. I didn't really see the need of making sure that we don't forget to renew it every five years. So in reality, that's the only thing that has changed. So it's worked out, I think, pretty good. We provide a little bit of a budget to help with capital improvements. They take care of pretty much everything else. So they they, you know, we buy the carts and and put the carts on a government lease to save them some money, but they pay us a hundred percent of that amount back. So it's a, it's a pretty good wash. They do invest money. They are required to invest money back into the course. They have the employees. They do that. We help some when we can, but I think overall, it's been a pretty good thing. Cities that operate their golf course generally operated at a loss significantly higher than the amount of money we invest. So any other questions? I'll entertain them. Other than that, it's, I think, pretty straightforward.
Not then I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the twenty twenty five lease agreement in the city of Borger and Philip for the operation of the Borger Municipal Golf Course, replacing the twenty lease
Second.
All in favor? And it passes. Item, item fourteen, considering take appropriate action to select a consulting firm for RFP dash zero zero one dash twenty five electric service safety improvement services and authorize staff to negotiate a contract for future city council approval. Mr. Spreddlin.
So as the council aware, a couple of meetings ago, we joined the Panhandle Alliance for Safe Electricity, which is a group of regional municipalities looking to see if there's anything that we might can do to encourage or make sure that electric service is provided in a safe and reliable manner. As part of that agreement with the Faze cities, we all agreed to put out a request for proposal for consulting services to assist in that area. So we did put that out on August fifteenth or posted, put that out and the deadline was August fifteenth for response. So we did get one response from Don't Burn Me Inc. LLC. And so that's what you're looking at and what's what's been attached. So they they propose to commit financing and risk. DBM will fully finance its efforts, assume all financial risk and identify the city. They've identified their expert team. And you've got some information in there on on Mr. Abraham, and we've met with them, and then their services are to explore. They've met the requirements of the RFP. Proposed to explore alternatives with the city's current provider, negotiate safety and reliability improvements, evaluate acquisitions or municipalization of utility assets, arrange financing and develop transition planning. They also commit to assisting in drafting ordinances, coordinating regulatory approval and providing public communication support. What we are doing today is only selecting whether or not this firm meets the requirements of the RFP. The meat and potatoes on whether or not we want to go forward will be held in the contract that will come back to the council in a future meeting. So at that time, we'll have the full details. So part of this process has been to to explore, you know, alternatives and make sure that that we're taking care of the public's interest as the city's authority to regulate electric utilities and make sure that that's provided in a safe manner. So up to now, this is just kind of the next step in that process. Right now, like I said, the only thing you're taking action on today is the selection of the firm. Meaning, does the firm meet the requirements of the RFP and can they provide the services that we outlined in the RFP? This is not lit, at this point, nothing's legally binding. We're seeing, do we want to go to the next step and get the legally binding terms? And move forward with seeing those terms and then deciding what route the city wants to take at that. Clear as mud?
Yes.
And if there, if anyone has anything, and if not, then I'll entertain a motion.
I move to authorize the selection of Don't Burn Me Services LLC as consulting firm for the electric service safety improvement services, RFP, and direct staff to negotiate a contract for future council approval.
I second.
All in favor? And it passes. And item fifteen, considering take appropriate action to adjourn.
Take a motion, we would adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?